Are we all set, Mr. Lincoln? Thank you. All right, let's get things underway this evening. And first, we'll stand for the pledge. I've asked Ms. Beard if she would lead us in the pledge tonight. Welcome, everyone, to our Board of Education meeting tonight. Before we get any business underway, I'd like to ask the board and everyone here to just commit to a moment of silence in memory of the Bowen family. Thank you. First on the agenda is communications from the public and press. I don't see anyone here from the public. We do have a guest here this evening, but we're going to ask him to talk to us a little bit in a few minutes. But I don't see any press or public here, so we will move on to board correspondence. And under board correspondence, we actually do have some board correspondence for the first time in quite some time. Attached to your agenda is the announcement from St. Lawrence Lewis BOCES President Roger Bennett of the dates of the BOCES annual meeting and the component districts vote on the BOCES administrative budget, as well as the vacancies on the BOCES board. The annual meeting is April 10th at the BOCES administrative office in Canton. The local districts will all vote on the administrative budget and the slate of nominees to BOCES on April 29th. And that night is our regular April board meeting night. And related to this, also attached to your agenda is we've received a request from Mr. Bennett, who is one of the nominee, or is, whose position is one of three that is up for reelection. We've had a request from Mr. Bennett to nominate him for another term. And Roger is here this evening. And Roger, if you'd be good enough to make your way over to the, to the microphone so you can be heard, we'd, we'd like to hear a little bit about you and somebody. Ah, there we go. Thank you very much. So Roger, you have the floor.
Okay. Fortunately, we have changed our board meeting to four o'clock this afternoon, so I'm able to be here. I did stop and see Ron and talk to him about the nomination and so forth. And I guess the point I'm trying to make is how do we better communication with all the boards? Many years ago, we had a county school boards, and it was very active, and you had time to meet with each other and talk. Today, that seems to have gone to the past. There is a board, and they do meet on the annual night of the meeting. I'm going to try to convince some people to kind of reinvent the wheel and get back into better communication. I've always said when I've been here that I'm only as close as the telephone, and I'll give you my number right now, 315-323-5063. And I'm used to getting calls 24 hours a day. I don't like them at night anymore, but if that's the time you have to talk, then I'm more than willing to talk to you. I'll try to answer any questions. If I can't answer it, I will find out and get an answer for you. Other than that, what else do you want to know about me?
Well, I guess I do have a question. Understanding that you can't get into names or anything else very much related to this, we haven't really gotten any idea what's happening in terms of the district superintendent vacancy. Can you just comment on the process for that and timeline and so forth?
Yes. The president of the Board of BOCES will receive a letter at some point in time, and I'm assuming it's going to be sooner than later. There was a survey sent out, which was filled out and with the different districts and stuff. And until the letter is received to the president, we know no more than you know about how it's going to be. I know that the Franklin County BOCES superintendent has been appointed, and he will be the one who works with our board to get a new member.
The determinate, the, the letter that Mr. Bennett was referring to, I believe, comes from the Commissioner of Education, because whenever a district superintendent leaves any BOCES for retirement or any purposes, the state conducts a review of that BOCES to find out, a study on that BOCES, to see if it can be dissolved, changed, merged, whatnot, before they would open up the vacancy. So that's the letter he's waiting for from the commissioner, because once, he's assuming that letter says that our BOCES will stay the same, then, then that lets them open up so that they can start the search process. So they have to wait for that. But I just want to, I know those things, and he didn't, I just want to make sure it was cleared up, that that's what we're waiting for.
Right. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Mr. Bennett?
Do you think that there will be any reach out from, from the BOCES board, or from, from the BOCES board to the districts maybe asking for what we would want in a new district superintendent, or any other hopes we would have for the BOCES in the future, given that we're going to get a new leader?
I don't know that. That would be up to the superintendent that's coming in to sit with us so that we can line up how we're going to do it. And I have no idea at this point in time how we're going to do it. I'd hope that we'd communicate and get input, but I can't say how it's going to operate at this time. Till I get the letter and find out more, I'm just as knowledgeable as you people are about it. I mean, you just don't get it until you get the inputs.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, Roger, first of all, thank you for your many years of service, representation on the BOCES board. You also put in a good bit of time right here at this board table. We thank you for that. Your nomination is on our agenda for approval, and we shall see. But I, I, I think you're looking pretty good.
I will add one, one little thing, that I have the benefit of working for BOCES, and I can tell you from my 19 years at BOCES, it is very, very, very rare that Roger misses any event.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Roger. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, well, I'm thinking I'm going to wait and see how the vote goes.
Well, you're certainly welcome to stay. Okay. Next, we have, we'll move to information from board members. We'll start with the student ex officio report and Ms. Beard. Did we ever get our tangerine chicken?
I think we did at one of the, one of the, we did at the superintendent interviews.
Superintendent interviews, that's right, yeah.
Can I have a question? Can I ask a question? You're saying the corner bathrooms are frustrating. Can you elaborate a bit?
Any other questions for Isabel? Okay, thank you. Moving on to the facilities committee report, my understanding is that Mr. LeBlanc is not going to give this report. He was not in attendance, so I think Mr. Tusa has it.
The facilities committee met on January 21st over at the Cab Building. We met with Megan Vanderbrook from King &amp; King. We discussed the next capital project. We are looking at doing an RFP for a construction manager for that project, and the due date, the due date for that should be the end of February, early March, and hopefully with interviews for a construction manager to take place in early to late March. The project is looking to be quite sizable, and it will primarily just be a nuts and bolts project. There are quite a few different areas of need, and so it, it's, it's looking to be a sizable project. And the next facilities committee meeting, I believe, is February 24th.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Any questions for, for Dan on the facilities? All right, moving on then to the policy committee report and Trustee Monroe.
The policy committee met January 14th, 5:30 in Ron's office. We reviewed policies in the 4 and 5,000 series, policies 4270, screening committees for administrative positions, policy 4310, superintendent of schools, and policy 4320, superintendent of Board of Education relations. Those were all review only. The policy committee reviewed those. There were no concerns or recommended changes. Policy 4330, administrative, administrative staff, there was updated language to include the Assistant Superintendent of Instruction, and we also recommended adding language to the policy to include the Director of Educational Support Services, as well as updating the Food Service Director as responsible for reporting to the superintendent, and no longer the Director of Business Administration. Policies 4410, professional development opportunities, and policy 4420, compensation-related benefits, those were review only. We reviewed and no changes. Policy 5110, budget planning and development, there's a paragraph, quote, "A schedule of reserve funds setting forth, setting forth the name of each reserve fund, a description of its purpose, the balance of the close of the third quarter of the current fiscal year, and a brief statement explaining any plans for the use of each reserve fund for the ensuing fiscal year," end quote. So we plan to make sure that in the budget planning and development process, we include this as a separate item in the budget newsletter and public budget presentation. Policy 5120, school district budget hearings, policy 5130, budget adoption. And those two policies were reviewed, review only, and no, no concerns or changes as they stand with education law. Policy 5140, administration of the budget, also reviewed only, no concerns or recommended changes. And then there was a policy 5150, the contingency budget. We recommend to rescind based on Erie One's recommendation. It's also a duplicate policy there. There were also other items up for discussion in this policy committee meeting in January. We reviewed, we went back to the table with the, the board norms that Mr. Haggott presented to us in the December meeting, I believe. And so we discussed, we looked at the sample that was provided through NISBA, and then we looked at the draft that was provided to us, and then the policy committee reviewed it. And we just recommended changing the language at the beginning of each header to "The Board Aspires To." We felt that that was blanket coverage to cover the changes necessary. 3275, nomination and recognition of community honorees. So this was also another reviewed policy from the January meeting at the request of Mr. Haggott. And if you recall, this was the policy that, that discussed the number of total petition signatures required in order to have a naming or recognition of any type of facility or district asset. So the policy committee did discuss this, and basically what we decided was that the, give me just a moment here. We did recommend that the, leaving the thousand, I believe it's a thousand signatures, is that right, Kevin? It says a thousand currently that we wanted to, we recommended keeping it as it's written in the policy. We actually felt that that number was relatively low. We had some discussion about how a thousand signatures represents roughly one-seventh of community voter, voter input currently even, so. So the recommendation was to keep that policy as written. And that was everything from the January policy committee meeting.
Can you repeat the number of that policy?
That is policy number 3275.
It's not there on the agenda, approved?
No, no, I.
It was just a question.
I, I requested that they, that the policy committee go back and look at that, because it's my belief that the number of, of letters and the number of signatures is too high. And I just made the request, and I very much appreciate that you took the time in the meeting to, to have more discussion on that. I do appreciate that.
I have a question for the policy committee. Do, what's the update on policies for AI? Are we working on it? Is something coming up soon? Is it on the agenda?
We, so it, it gets brought up a number of times in meetings, and so from my understanding is that we're kind of waiting to see what Erie One provides. We understand that they're working on some sort of draft, and so we're kind of waiting for guidance from them to figure out what the, what the benchmark is for AI-based policies, and then, you know, we can kind of review what they suggest and discuss as, as recommended and.
Seems like it's evolving very fast, and a lot can happen, so could we put a deadline? If we don't have nothing from Erie, could we get something somewhere else and?
NISBA already has a policy, and maybe we can use that as a guideline just to get started.
Could we look at that and maybe make it acceptable? I think we owe it to the teachers and to know what they're doing with this.
Teachers we owe it to, too.
Because we want, we want the liberty to use it, but there's a lot of risk also for HR. I don't know if HR's using it. There's a lot of risk for the, there's a lot of liabilities for the district if we do something wrong using that tool.
I believe we do now have an Erie One draft at least, so we can compare that to. We can put that on.
Before the summer, at least, if we can come back.
Kevin, February? I'm sorry, Zach, Zach is the chair, sorry.
Okay, so I've got it noted. We'll, we'll take a look at NISBA's policy that they've suggested, and we'll discuss it at the next policy committee meeting in two weeks.
See what we can bring up and speed it up. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments concerning the policy committee report? Okay. Before I move on to my report, I did skip over the public forum on the 2526 budget, and Mr. Burke is going to touch on that during his reports to the board. So we'll continue for now with, with my report. The first thing that I have is, I just mentioned diligent community. We had a presentation last month by diligent community. We've had myself and Ashley and Mallory and Ron as sort of an ad hoc committee, had a little bit longer presentation. There's really not much more to say about it, but we do have an item for action later on in today's meeting. Next, I, last Friday, attended the NISBA Area 6 Legislative Breakfast in Lake Placid. There were about 75 or so board members and district and BOCES leaders that attended. Senator Steck was there, as were Assembly members Billy Jones and Matt Simpson. Just a few takeaways, they all, the three legislators in attendance all acknowledged that schools are in a better place than they were last year at this time concerning foundation aid, but also pointed out that one of the big losers in the school funding area this year is New York City because of the way poverty is measured. So that's going to have to be addressed at some point, so there's some question how things, you know, may shake out, shake out. Attached to your agenda is a document that NISCUS has put out outlining their top 10 legislative priorities, and these topics formed the, the basis of what, most of what was discussed at the breakfast. And again, just a few takeaways, Senator Steck and Assemblyman Jones both sort of hinted that you may see a pause on the EV bus mandate. We hope that that is true. Lawmakers, the three lawmakers that were there, I mean, were asked to look at supporting not only increasing allowable earnings for retired teachers to help keep them in the classroom, but also state incentives to encourage young people to get into teaching. They were also asked to support affordable housing options to help teachers be able to afford to live where they teach, and that is an issue that is plaguing districts like Serenac Lake and others in the Adirondack region because of the number of short-term rentals and that kind of thing driving up housing costs. The legislators were asked to support changes to the civil service system, increased support for special education students and programs, and we also heard comments from Regent Catania and NISCUS Executive Director Chuck Diedrich that, who both attended. So that's just a little bit of what I took away from the legislative breakfast last Friday. The next item that I have is sort of a, a goals report for our Board of Education goals. I asked Mr. Burke last month to make sure that we had some information on the district goals, and I thought it was only fair that we also give sort of a mid-year summary of what's going on with our approved Board of Education goals for this year. Those are attached to the agenda. Board goal number one was that the Board of Education will develop a written handbook for the student ex officio board member. That is essentially complete, and the completed handbook was approved on, at our November 18th meeting, and the completed handbook is linked to the document. On board goal number two, the Board of Education will develop written procedures for onboarding newly elected board trustees. There were several objectives that were set forth, and we've made, I think, excellent progress, although it's not completely finalized. There is an onboarding outline that if you would just take a minute to open, I'll just walk you through quickly what, what some of this program is going to look like. There's a sort of a foreword, sort of the reasons why we're doing this. So each, each session, the first one would be at the end of May, sometime in June, the focus of the meeting would be welcome and introduction to board service. This would be for the newly elected trustees. The goal for the meeting would be to welcome them and just kind of get started on the basics. And there is a, a list of, of the folks on, on the board and in administration that would attend. Each session has a list, a list of tasks or, you know, subject matter to cover, and it also includes a materials list, which, everything is linked, not everything is linked, but most of the items are linked. And you'll see as you thumb through this that each of the sessions, it's, it's the same type of thing. There's a, a goal for each meeting, a list of tasks, a bunch of materials that would be used for facilitation of discussion of those subject areas. And again, we go through July with this. We go through a meeting in August. The meeting in August would be sort of a tour of the district, which would be available not only for the newly elected board members, but for anyone else on the board that would like to see all of the district's facilities. And in September, we get into some student data, student metrics, et cetera. And again, the formula's the same, a task list, there's an objective for each meeting, and a list of materials that we would use to facilitate discussion. In October, we get into employee contracts, evaluations, both board and superintendent. And the last session would be either November or December, and it would be sort of an assessment of. of the onboarding program and to try to get input on how effective it was and what, if anything, needs to be changed or tweaked. This is, for, for any of you and most of you who are sitting at the table went through sort of what was termed at the time, new board member orientation. That was no more than maybe at the most, three hours over two nights. And it was very, very cursory. I think we need to do an awful lot better in preparing new board members for service on the Board of Education. They need to be brought up to speed more quickly. And I understand that this is very ambitious, but I also think it's something that very much needs to be done in order to help newly elected folks be better board members, quicker, more informed and more aware of what's going on in the district and, and how things are handled in our organization. So that is the new trustee onboarding. Back to the, the goals report. So that's essentially what, Board Goal Number Three, right? No, or that was Board Goal Number Two. Board Goal Number Three, the Board of Education will investigate the cost and benefits of changing our document storage, board clerk record-keeping and agenda workflow platform from Google to diligent community. We're, the rubber's going to hit the road tonight. We're going to vote up or down on diligent community this evening. I think we've met all of the objectives in terms of forming the ad hoc committee. We've gotten a quote for the platform. We've seen demonstrations of it. Hopefully you spent a little bit of time with the demo account over the last couple of weeks and we'll make that decision this evening. Our last board goal, number four, the Board of Education will create a focus goal on the graduating class of 2025 by using tools such as the LifeTrack survey, a graduation ceremony policy and a board-sponsored reception event for seniors. This is the one that we haven't really done a whole lot on, although from what I understand, there's been some, some inroads made with the, getting the LifeTrack survey underway. But as far as some of these other parts of this goal, we haven't really had a lot of time put in on this, on this, but we do have a plan. The, the status report is basically that the ad hoc committee that is, been put together is going to be meeting on the 26th. Ms. Murphy is, or Mrs. Murphy is going to be chairing. And the Board of Education policy on the graduation ceremony is being drafted by Mr. Peretta and will be reviewed by the policy committee. So we do have some definite action steps to take and that will be happening before the end of the month. So that is my update on our Board of Education goals.
I have a question.
Yeah, any questions?
I have a question. So you didn't say much about diligent. You said you met, you looked at it. Do you have any more information? Do you like it? Do we like it?
The, any more information was information that would have sort of been formed in,
The users.
In the board members' minds by going to the demo account. There were, I sent out an email to everyone encouraging them to do that. There were lots of helpful demonstration videos on that demo account. So hopefully some, some time was invested by individual board members in investigating a little bit more, getting more information on that. I, I don't really have, I don't have a horse in the race. I just, I just was interested in, because I had been exposed to this product at various NISBA events and things that I had been to. You and I had talked a little bit about the, the fact that you'd been exposed to diligent community as well. I just thought it was something that was worth investigating.
Yeah, I was, I was exposed and they said good things and everybody that I heard said great things about it. But I also asked what we were using and we're satisfied with what we're currently using. And I asked Ashley, who was the main user, and she was satisfied with Google. Not that the price is expensive, but I wanted to have some feedback from people who tried it and use it, because I didn't, I didn't try it, I didn't use it. But if that's what we adopt, I'll follow the group. But I would like to know from people that have a lot of interest, who tried it. What do you think about it?
We've, Ashley has surveyed her, some of her fellow board clerks and there are other districts in our region that use not diligent community, but its successor program, Board Docs. Everyone is going to be migrating to diligent community at some point in the future. But there, there are several districts that use Board Docs right now in our region. And according to the gentleman who gave the demonstration for us last month, there are roughly 450 or so districts throughout the state that use diligent products. So that's over, well over half the districts in, in the state are, are using Board Docs or diligent community. So I, I find that an interesting aspect of, you know, the, the question of whether we should go in that direction.
Does anybody have feedback? Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No.
I, I tried, you know, I looked through the videos. I found it to be very user-friendly, but in my notes, I wrote down that I wanted to hear from Ashley because you're really, I wanted to hear directly from you what you think about it and is it worth the change?
I think it has its advantages. I think there are things that we can utilize, probably that will make life better. But I also am very comfortable with Google and don't have any trouble there. And maybe there are things in Google that we can do to better our process if we use the same platform. So basically my overall thought was whatever is best for the board is best for me. And if you guys didn't realize it, yes, Ron and I will put documents in and whatnot, but really as long as you find whatever problems you decide on, it's user-friendly to you guys at the time, I believe.
Was it worth the cost? Yeah.
So.
The cost, the cost of it is, it's addable, correct?
Yeah.
Do, do we know what our true cost will be for this yearly after aid?
Given that we are at about an 80% BOCES aid, it would be under $2,000.
So the cost is not a factor here. It's about adapting and the resources it's going to take to adjust and all that. And there's nothing broken. Nobody has a passion for it. I don't see why we would bring some change when we don't need a change. It's like we're imposing something on her. She's happy, we're happy. I don't see why we're changing. My opinion. We'll vote on it. Or we could postpone also for next year. We can review when we're going to get more feedback. But so far, I guess we're changing just to change and we're feeding a vendor that's trying to sell something that's just different, not necessarily better. My opinion.
That, that kind of echoes my sentiment too. I, I feel like there's a lot on the, on the goals and maybe it's time to just put that on a back burner and, and think about it a little bit more. I didn't have time to do the demo. I, I just haven't had time. And that's something that probably, if, if we're going to make a change, I'm going to need some help. Like I, I don't feel comfortable that I can do it all myself. I'm going to need somebody who's kind of there to guide me along so that when I'm looking for something, I know where to find it because it's kind of like a dashboard, right? So you have to, I mean, I think some of it's intuitive, but not all of it. And I actually like having the email reminders, like that Ashley would send out where she says, you know, there's been a change or please check your agenda or something like that, because I do, I regularly check my emails. Like that's something that I religiously do. But I don't know if I have to interface with some other kind of technology in between that, if I'm going to feel that accessible. It's just my opinion.
Kind of follows up our theme from our policy meeting. Is it a want or a need? Do we really need it? I mean, it's not that, oh, finance, I'm sorry. Yes. No, is it a need? It's not that much money, but is it a need?
I'll, I'll kind of mimic what I said last meeting too, when I was exploring into the system. I had the opportunity to send the presentation, but Ashley's definitely right from the policy side of things. It has incredible advantages. The fact that it integrates with Erie One, but also the search index, to be able to type in a few words into a glossary and find fairly related policies. I think cutting down on the time to search for policies, I think is incredibly efficient, as well as efficiency in Ashley's time too, because we all know that she's very busy. And so I feel that once she gets into the system and very familiar with it, the ability to enter notes kind of as they come up in the meeting and actually turn those board meeting notes around almost in the same evening, I think is incredibly efficient. So there's definitely some ROI to, to go with this for the cost of under $2,000 for sure, especially as we become more familiar with the, with the program. But I can speak to Tricia's point too. I, I totally get where you're coming from about new systems and trying to figure out how to navigate them. But in terms of what we would need as board members, it's fairly, it's, it's a, it's an easy click path. You're just going to click through to the information that you want to see and that's, that's pretty much it, apart from logging in. But, and then the other side of that is I really like the community page. Not that it has to replace our website, but the fact that we can put important information, like our board objectives and goals right there on the homepage. We can put photos. I just, I think it goes hand in hand with why we're doing LifeTrack as well. You know, we're trying to tie our school district to our community and we're trying to reach out to graduates and alumni and we want to connect everybody. So if we stay kind of current in this platform, I think we have opportunity to connect with our community in that way. So it's, it's got its advantages, I think. And I also see how it aligns with our objectives and goals too. So that's, that's my opinion.
We'll have opportunity for more discussion when we get to recommended actions. Okay, so the, the last thing that I have on my report, I just wanted to emphasize the, there was one other change to the board norms that are also on for recommended action tonight. In addition to what Mr. Monroe reported to you all about the changing the Board of Education will to the Board of, Board of Education aspires to, there was one other change that I wanted to, to float by you this evening and that was under the communicate, the, the last bullet under communications norms. And I think this addresses a concern that trustee Murphy brought up a couple of months ago. Allowed, the, it reads now, allow the president to act as board spokesman on ma, spokesperson on matters of public record and the superintendent to speak on behalf of the district. So I think there was a little concern that the, the, the communication norm example, as it was originally written, gave a little bit too much latitude to the board president to speak on behalf of the board. And I think that takes care of that concern. Just wanted to point that out.
And the only other question I had on the board goals was someplace I read that the LifeTrack survey is now open. Okay?
Yes.
So I'm curious what that means and what it looks like for somebody like Isabel.
I have not seen LifeTrack survey at all, or anything.
So none of your teachers have talked to you about what LifeTrack is or why we're participating in it as a school district?
No, all of my knowledge of it is from the survey.
So are we waiting for our ad hoc committee meeting to start promoting that or?
Let me, let me go back to, sorry, let, let me go back to Mr. Oliver. As I understood from him, he had opened it up and that, right after break, he was really going to start pushing hard. He'll have QR codes, I believe, around the building, talking with students about what it is. We'll also be able to track this year exactly who has completed it, who has not. We won't be able to see, you know, we won't be able to identify what the student said. There'll be that anonymity, but that should help us get far higher of a percentage of return rate. So my understanding is it was open. So the students, and again, I want to confirm with him, but I thought the students should have gotten an email by now from LifeTrack that it's open, here's your password type thing.
Right. But there, so for instance, like when they do ba, ba, fa, fa, forms?
Yes.
Okay. They usually have the guidance counselor come in to either English or social studies, one of the core classes, and talk about, you know, what those entail, why you might fill one out, et cetera. So are we going to have something akin to that for the high school seniors? Because you wouldn't have to go into every English class or social, you could just go into the one that's senior English or, you know, et cetera. And then that way, you're explaining what it is, why we're having it and why we want seniors' participation.
Let me gather that back from Mr. Oliver. I know he understands the importance for, you know, long-term planning as well as for the board information of why we're doing the LifeTrack and the commitments that he's already made to making sure that we have far better return rate on those. But let me get that from him. I don't want to speak for him when, when he's not here tonight.
Okay. Well, maybe when we meet on February 26th, we could just have him
Perfect.
Talk to us about it.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Can I add a question to this? Did you mention that there's going to be QR codes everywhere?
I believe that's one of the things that he had indicated he would be doing is putting up flyers that have the QR codes so that the students can go directly to that survey.
So QR codes means we're going to have phones everywhere in the school trying to? Is that what we're encouraging?
Yeah, after 2:30 at the end of the bell schedule.
Okay, I mean.
Because students like Isabel never carry their phones. We know that.
Maybe that's what they'll be doing in the bathroom.
Well, well, also too, like the QR codes are just for seniors. So what is going to stop a freshman or a sophomore? They have to log in. Okay, very good.
Sidebar, I don't like QR codes. QR codes are a big, nice place to get virus. You don't know who put those there and it's an easy way to get to a place you don't want to go. So I don't recommend them anywhere.
You're not the first person I've heard that from.
Unless it's in the class and they say if you go to this website, if it's, the material's given by a teacher, but if it's on the wall in the bathroom or somewhere, it's very risky.
I agree. That, that's why I kind of want somebody to That's why I kind of want somebody to come in and present what it is, because then they could bring the QR code with them. And after the kids log in, they could, they could do that. But it will then, as you said, it will require the seniors bringing their cellphone to the class. So it kind of has to be very organized.
Seniors do have the privilege to go on their phone in the senior lounge. So we could maybe do something like that.
Maybe have the presentation in the senior lounge and just say, you know, all graduating seniors, we're going to be doing this all day long and, you know, when you have, so it's like when you have a study hall, you can go there?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So maybe do it that way. I don't know. But I think it it needs some thought.
Well, we're halfway through February. Just to point that out, and this is one of our goals. So we're pushing up against the window of June.
Okay, I think that concludes my president's report. So finally, so I'll turn the the floor over now to Mr. Burke. And I think we're going to start with the the public forum on the budget. Is that correct?
We can certainly do that.
Chris, could we try the other PowerPoint that I gave to you? Okay, why don't we start with Mrs. Charleston, and then I'll make sure I email that one to you so you have it? Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll do the review of the mid-year goals.
Okay, so as you are aware, we are doing our district goals a little differently. We are focusing on three main district goals of the ABCs, attendance, benchmarks, and climate. So I will just give an update of each of those. Chris, is it on display? It's not letting me go to the next slide. Perfect. Okay, so within the presentation, there's two visuals on the first slide. The first one is our visual of the ABC goals. If you click on that logo, it will bring you to the district goals that were all written out. Just wanted you to have access so it's at your fingertips quickly. In the right hand corner, there's just a little infographic. This is a snapshot of the the district data. If you click on that picture, that will also take you to the shortcut of just looking at our goals overall. I believe Ashley included a hard copy as well in your board agenda. And the reason that I'm doing that is I do have snapshots of that data information within the slides, but sometimes it's a little difficult to read those numbers. So A, attendance. Attendance, our goal is chronic absenteeism, and I'll get to that in a minute. But we did want to capture, I'm trying again, Chris, to go ahead. There we go. So although it's chronic absenteeism is our goal, we did want to highlight daily attendance. As you know, each of the buildings, they have a lot of incentives going on with the student body, and I'll talk about those in the implementation slides. But pre-K six daily attendance, this is all three elementary buildings. From September, June last year, the 23-24 school year, it ended right around 93%. And we are on track so far from September to January to be again right around that 93 percentage for daily attendance. So we we just wanted to highlight that. Seven 12, it's hovering right around the 90%, which is where we ended last year for daily attendance as well. So we're pretty proud of that. So before I get into the chronic absenteeism, I just wanted to, I tried to take some visuals of a recent post from our comptroller. So this is a study, the data is from 2022, but it was released in October of 2024, this past fall. And what it highlights is all of the states across the nation. So it's basically saying this is not a Messina issue or concern. This is happening across our nation post pandemic. And so New York State is approximately 29% chronic absenteeism. And within the article, it does say schools that are similar to Messina have more of a chronic absenteeism around 33%. And you'll see our seven 12 numbers look very similar to that. So just wanted to share that article with you for comparison of national data. So our first slide here shows our pre-K six. So in the left hand side, you can see our goal by the end of this school year is to be at 22.13%. And as of now, we are at 21.23. Our goal was to have a 1% decrease at pre-K six. And so far this year, we are currently at 1.9% decrease. So we've surpassed our goal. With that being said, there's still another half of the year left. And just a reminder, chronic absenteeism is students who miss 10% or more days of school. They are considered chronically absent. The seven 12, our goal was to decrease 2% each year, so over a five year goal of decreasing 10%. So our goal by the end of the school year is to be at 31.15%. And currently, our chronic absenteeism at seven 12 is 32.8. So we're seeing a 0.35% decrease. So although it's not on track to where we would like, we'd like that 2% decrease. There are a lot of efforts going into this goal. And Mr. Oliver's takeaway was he is at least happy it's heading in the right direction. It is decreasing. So within the district goals, there was an implementation page. So I I will quickly share these notes. These somewhat mimic how we used to do our district goals with more of a narrative style. So quarterly building attendance committee meetings, those are happening at the pre-K six level. And that's where they they collect data. They're looking at different students. They're connecting with families. At seven 12, they have the MTSS, multi-tiered system support, and really are having weekly conversations as a team. So team members are usually principals, assistant principals, counselors, social workers, school psychs, nurses, SRO, working collectively, looking at the students. And actually, our hub of school tool has a new dashboard where you can see students that have chronic absenteeism and what their percentage is. And it color codes at red, yellow, green. So it's a nice visual that these teams can use to support students and their families. As I said, attendance and incentives. Everyone I spoke to with the principals, they wanted to give a thank you to Dunkin' Donuts. There's been a lot of really great things, and the Dunkin' Donuts here in Messina has been wonderful to work with. Schools are doing fun things like scavenger hunts, they're having monthly contests, they're doing homeroom competitions, they're having winners create a lunch menu item, brag tags on the door. So I will say that your admin team is really working hard on getting students to school. And something else to highlight that was presented at the board meeting last time was the pre-vocational opportunities for our grade 10 students. We really do see improvement of attendance getting them here. I also had mentioned the communication problem solving with families. Our team continues to work on that. And then utilizing ParentSquare, the next slide, I have some information about ParentSquare. This is our overall dashboard. Each week I get a summary of how the platform is being utilized. And when we rolled this out to staff, we said we were starting with direct messages and posts, just to get familiar with those. And so far, we have 56,305 direct messages. That means staff and and families communicating and 3,386 posts. The second infographic shows the interactions with families and just the direct messages back, 1,474 out of 2,472. So we can see that it's being highly utilized. We're getting great feedback, especially at the pre-K six level. Seven 12 likes the platform. They're they're still wanting to use other forms of communication if that's how they're communicating with families, and it's successful. And so, yes, if you're able to communicate with families and email is working well for you, we're not necessarily saying you have to change that immediately. But we do make sure that they know it's for the benefit of the family to use the one platform. So going on to B for benchmarks, actually, I'll pause there. Does anyone have any questions about attendance?
So Nicole, how do you count a student who comes in tardy? Are they counted present or is that counted as an absentee?
It depends on the time of day that they're here, and I don't know the exact number of it. But when they're flagged tardy, they are not flagged absent.
Okay.
And another question that came up for chronic absenteeism, is it excused only? And no, it's unexcused and excused. So basically, if you're out, you're out. That's this data.
So even if they have a doctor's appointment, that's counted as an absence?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Is it a standard to do, is it a national standard to do that, to count them out, even if they're excused with a doctor's note?
So this is per New York State. This is a data report that I pull, and that's the information. It's called the SERES 107, and it's excused and unexcused. And that's what talks to our New York State report card for chronic absenteeism. I don't know how other states do it in the nation, but that is how New York State does it.
Because if if they're sick, you know, if there's a pandemic, for example, or if everybody's sick, it counts against us.
I think the the heart of
And we don't want to encourage people to come to school if they're sick, and then spread it to everybody, and then everybody's sick.
But really, this data point is chronic absenteeism, you're not in school, right? So it's just saying learning loss. Like, if you if you're missing more than 10%, whether it's you're sick or, you know, you went on vacation, whatever the reason is, it's saying you're not in school learning. And that just gives us the information that we need to say students are either with us or they're not.
So two, that probably, too, has to do with, like, how long? So say, for instance, my son has a doctor's appointment at 10:00. He's gone for, sometimes you wait in the doctor's office a while. Let's say he's gone for two hours. That might not be enough to count him, I mean, if he comes back afterwards, then he'd be okay.
That's why they sign in and out at the office. The clerical team is really great on reporting within SchoolTool. And SchoolTool talks to the state reporting.
Okay.
So everything is entered there.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll move on to B for benchmarks. And our goal here was increasing proficiency of the three through eight assessments, as well as the New York State regions. Obviously, we have not given those yet. And so I will share with you what we use for progress monitoring for benchmarking throughout the year. And you're all familiar with iReady. What we pulled for this information is called a projection report. So this isn't how many students are in each tier, which you've seen previously. What this does for the three through eight assessments, it says based on the beginning of year and middle of year assessment, benchmark assessment with iReady, they project what they're going to get on the New York State assessment. They project whether they will get a level one, two, three, or four on the New York State assessment, which is helpful. So on the left hand side, you can see, highlighted in yellow, our goals. And then in the column I circled in red, that is what the projection is. So this is for ELA, for three through eight ELA. Grade three, our end of year three through eight assessment goal, grade three is 41%. It's projected at 46%. Grade four, 47%, projected at 49%. Grade five, 48%, projected at 40%. Grade six, 46%, projected at 53, and so on. So you can see we're right on par with our goals. And so this information has been shared with grade level leaders and department chairs. And they, when they meet with their professional learning communities tomorrow, will be reviewing this data. And what you can do is you can drill down and see the actual students that might be right on the cusp of that, too, and, you know, give them intervention to then get them to a level three, which is proficient on the three through eight. The same information is on the next slide, but it is math. It's set up the same way. And so grade three, you'll see 62%. The projection is 73%. Grade four, 60%, projection of 67%. And you can see the pattern continues. So we are overall happy with our projection report. And again, we're using that mid mid-year benchmark assessment to help data drive the instruction. The next slide shows the regions. Our goal is to have 72.77% proficient in the New York State regions. We don't necessarily give something as iReady at the high school level to all students. So we don't have those projection reports at this level. But we wanted to highlight some things that are happening. Teachers are currently reviewing passing rates of all of their their regions courses. They are looking at some mid-year data. And Mr. Holliday just wanted me to highlight at his building that the four nights of students staying, there's the late bus for two of the nights, Monday, Wednesday, and now, and also Raider Academy, Tuesday, Thursday. He just wanted to say that that has been making a great difference. Students are staying often for the four days and getting the additional academic support that they need. Continuing with the implementation of the benchmark goal, the the meetings with the grade level leaders, department chairs, principals, directors, again, that happens at the beginning of the year. This information was shared and will be turnkey to their teams tomorrow. We will continue with the iReady and other benchmark assessment data. The goal about the special education progress monitoring, in talking with Ms. Castell, she really said it's on pause because when they started researching it, it's a universal screener, whereas students with IEPs are so differentiated, it almost didn't match. So they are, they are still researching that, and it's somewhat on pause at this point. And I tried to just highlight some professional learning opportunities that are really focused on academics. Science of reading, a very hot topic in the state and across the country. And we have many teachers that have participated in a five day training through SUNY New Paltz. That's for K three science of reading. We have hosted two summer literacy camps here and are continuing to grow our numbers regionally. We do that in partnership with BOSI's. And also just having our instructional coach, Jackie Sidon, be able to support teachers with new learning. We had Annalise Record here, mathematician. We're looking at new elementary math programs. And I'm just fine tuning our report cards to ensure that they really do align with what we're teaching and grading. And I I included the quick infographic of the shifts happening at the the new regions and the standards and implementation there. And our department chairs are doing a great job with their teams, and many are attending professional learning on that. Questions on benchmarks before I go to climate?
I have one, Nicole.
Sure.
Okay, thanks. Wondering what the, why the expectation for ELA is so much lower?
So our overall ELA scores, oops, I'm going the wrong way, I'm sorry. So we start with our baseline. So we used last year's scores. So our ELA scores are lower than our math scores. So each year, we're hoping to improve ELA 2%, whereas our math 1%. So that's why the percentage looks lower, because our actual scores are lower in ELA.
Any reason why for that, that you can imagine? Why are they lower?
I don't have a great answer.
Reading program?
I think what we're doing right now is trying to get as many staff trained in the science of reading. And we have really great implementation in many spots. And we just have to ensure over time that all teachers are trained and that all students have access to highly trained teachers in the science of reading. That has been a main goal.
I'm looking at grade eight, 39%. I'm, am I, and I may not be correct in saying this, at the junior high, there's honors math?
Yes.
Seventh and eighth grade?
This this current year, they did split it up between the two grade levels. Previously, it was just at grade eight.
But not ELA, so teachers So teachers who are trained in differentiating are probably struggling. They have really low students, really high students. They're getting lost, they're bored, and, I mean, 39% in eighth grade. That's-
That's a great point. I actually never connected the two of the honors, but that does make sense.
And Nicole, for the math, so you said it used to be honors in eighth grade. That was the Algebra I, right?
Yes, it still is. But what they've done is, instead of just cramming the curriculum in one year, they've spread it out over the course of two. So they do a modified grade seven, eight during grade seven, and then in grade eight, they do the Algebra I, which I think is a move in the right direction.
Yeah. Yeah. And to Joyce's point, you know, it's hard when, well, let me ask you this. So the accelerated, I'll call them accelerated, math students, are they self-selected? How do they get into this more accelerated program?
So there is a committee, the building principal, I'm unsure if the assistant principal is part of it, counselors. They're looking not only at their grade level, I'm sorry, their grades, but also study skills, work habits, right? Like, it's a collective decision, looking at the whole child. And they do use benchmark data as well, iReady scores.
What if a student wants to, but the committee doesn't think that they're going to be successful? Can they try it anyway?
I'm unsure about that. I'd have to ask Mr. Holliday. Any other questions about benchmarks?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment and go back to the difference between the proficiency levels with the reading and the math. It, it's, I've never, I haven't seen a math assessment of any kind that I wouldn't call a reading test. So if you, I think, I think this is somewhat misleading. The kids, if they're scoring so well in math, they're readers, and they're reading well, because if they're not, they can't score, they're not, they're just not going to score that high. And so with something like iReady, the, a lot of that proficiency, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but much of that, much of those numbers comes down to vocabulary knowledge often times, and so it just, and it's everyday vocabulary. It's not necessarily subject-specific stuff. So sometimes you've got students who are scoring lower on something like iReady than what they're really capable of. So it's, sometimes the data can be a little misleading, that's all.
And you are accurate with the vocabulary, so I did not include all of the iReady data, but vocabulary and reading comprehension are where we, where our students score the lowest. Their phonemic awareness and phonics is actually higher. And if you read a lot of articles about science of reading, you'll actually hear the phonics and phonemic talked about a lot. There's some, you know, kind of been that reading wars for decades going on, and that's what it highlights, and that's, our data is showing our students are strong in those areas. We're looking at the vocabulary, the reading comprehension, which is a lot more abstract. But we're looking at resources to help improve that.
This district isn't unique in that either. That's, that's, there's, there's a national trend with that, at the very least.
I understand the data, but in your opinion, do you think the kids nowadays know more at the same age as 20 years ago? Like, the curriculum is getting harder every year.
Absolutely.
And we're asking them to perform even more every year.
So it's no longer read a passage, answer a question that you can find right in the passage? That does exist, but it's more application of knowledge, it's more inferring, and those are abstract thoughts. And so it does go back to the vocabulary and overall comprehension of reading and understanding.
So we're pushing the student a lot?
Absolutely.
Because we're increasing the curriculum and we're asking them to follow those benchmarks year after year.
Yeah, those are the, those are the shifts in New York State standards, absolutely. Yep. Higher-level thinking, more abstract, more inferring.
Thanks.
Speaking of state standards, real quick, it just kind of popped in my head. I think it was September, I had asked the question, I had read an article about the states. There was some discussion about the requirements for regions for graduation. Has there been any further discussion or updates on that?
Are you talking about the new pathways and the Blue Ribbon Commission?
I believe so, yeah.
Yes. So they put out a timeline, meaning NICE had put out a timeline, and we are currently in quote-unquote "the planning year" of implementation. There's a lot of question marks. What are we planning for? Your question that you just asked is something we are asking as well. They are adamantly saying regions are not going away. Regions will be one pathway, and there will be many other pathways, like our SEAL of Literacy, SEAL of Civic Readiness. We'll see more of those, but we are unsure at this time what all that actually looks like.
Do you think that, so once this pathways goes into effect, if it goes into effect, do you think that we're going to have to look at these goals a little bit differently?
I think we're going to have to look at everything differently. And those are the honest conversations. Every time I'm meeting with our Professional Development Committee meeting, every time we're meeting as an admin team, we're looking at that. We're just trying to be as transparent as possible, as saying, as soon as we have information, you will have the information. It is a little, it feels a little unsteady, but we're just waiting, waiting to see where Okay, I'll go to climate survey. And as you know, climate survey, we give once a year. We will be administering the climate survey when we return from February break. This is actually a little bit earlier in the school year than we've done previously, and we are excited about that. We'll hopefully have the information back a little sooner. So although we don't have the PLC survey results, Mr. Burke and I thought we would at least share some discipline data. That's usually a good measure of overall climate and culture. And one thing we would like to highlight is, in the superintendent hearings for grade seven through 12, there were 38 superintendent hearings last year, and currently, as of the end of January, there has only been five. So that was a really great data point to share. Everything else looks quite similar. Obviously, the bar graphs are about half the size, so that shows we're going to be probably very similar to last year. We broke this up to ISS, OSS, and superintendent hearings on this first slide. And on the second slide, we have the five major SEC, SSEC, which is a report that we give to New York State every year, of assault, weapons, harassment, threat, and drugs. The first graph is pre-K six, where you can see, really, there's very little of any of those. And then the 712, you can see our numbers are, again, are very similar to what they were last year. And then that last bar graph, the SSEC, the drugs, the vaping does go in that category, and so that's certainly, it goes back to what Ms. Beard says, is we know there are concerns, and we are continuing to work on that. So implementation of climate goals. We, again, will have the survey administered. They are continuing with their support teams in each of the buildings. For professional learning, the pre-K six has been focused on TCIS, it's Therapeutic Crisis Intervention for Schools. And the 712 has been working with National Speaker Kelvin Oliver on alternatives to discipline. We do rely on our SRO and our additional social workers. They are helping with attendance, SEL support, behaviors, family interaction, and community resources. And another implementation point was our district and building DEI, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committees. We lost our facilitator from BOSI's. She went back into the classroom at a different school district, so we do not have the district committee, but we do, we are continuing the building committees, and we have facilitators sharing the work that they learned at the district committee last year with their teams at each of the buildings. Does anyone have any questions about climate? And obviously, I will have more data once we do the PLC climate survey.
Isabel, somebody said something about now that we have separate study hall monitors and that the teachers aren't doing that, that that's really helped the school climate. Are you feeling that?
Yes, I do agree with that statement.
Yeah. Yeah. So it just maybe takes a little bit of the pressure off the, off the teacher to have to hustle and get someplace and then get everybody set to go and-
Yeah, teachers have more free periods this year, and also it's more consistent for students to see the same face and how to change this semester. Does that help?
Oh, that's a good point. Then does that give the teacher more free time? Like, say you have a study hall and you want to go and maybe get some extra help, like, do they?
Yeah, actually, every day during my period, I go down and get help on my paperwork and work, so I really like it.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you for mentioning that. That is listed, and Mr. Oliver did want to highlight that, that that has been something that really has positively impacted the climate culture at the high school. So wrapping up district goals, the next two are the non-instructional goals. Superintendent Burke will give you updates on those. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice visual, by the way, that presentation. Excellent visual, A, B, C, and all those diagrams.
Chris, could we go to the slides that have the capital project? Okay, thank you. So on the next slide, the overarching question is, why would we begin even talking about a capital project when the reality is, we just closed out the last one, the last academic year? And the reality is, we actually broke ground on the last capital project in 2021, '22 school year. We won't begin breaking ground until the '27, '28 year, so we're six, seven years apart, and there's still a lot of work to be done. And I think it's important to remember that. In the last capital project, it was certainly very aggressive, working at all of the buildings, and because of COVID and costs associated with COVID, all of the work that was identified as being a priority could not be completed. And there is no truer place than that, right here than in the high school. Outside of the auditorium, a lot of the work that had been identified as being needed simply could not get done. So again, that's why we're going to be going back to the voters really soon to ask for their permission to engage in another capital project. And I just want to go through some of the highlighted areas of where that work will be. Starting in the high school, again, we know that this is really where the, where the work kind of stopped in the last capital project. We know, we've talked about this quite a bit, with our steam tunnel leak last year, the importance of updating our heating system. We'll be transitioning from a steam boiler plant to a hot water boiler, and that will be taking place. Again, we'll be replacing those from the cab, running the hot water over to the high school. We'll be freeing up our parking area again, getting that drive-through lane, so that'll be reopened. Also at the high school, replacing some air handlers and cooling units in the cafeteria and the media center. Also replacing the air handler in this building, in this, in this room. The location of the air handler is such that we cannot access it without removing some chairs and bringing in a lift. It wasn't well planned, we just couldn't do it in the last project. So we're either going to put a catwalk in or simply move the air handler. There will be partial roof replacement, replacing the ceiling and the lights. And part of the reason we need to replace ceiling and lights is that all ties into the HVAC system. We've got to get into the ceiling, and now's the time to do all of that work. One thing I think should hopefully make a lot of our folks happy, if they have any students, athletes that use the soccer fields or the elder softball fields, we'd be looking at adding exterior toilet rooms. We'd be basically renovating some interior space, but with having outside doors, so that we'd have restrooms for those folks. I'm hearing from, I ate lunch with four of our interact students on Monday, I'm sorry, on Tuesday, and they all happen to be females, and they were all very excited to hear that we will, in fact, be looking at the women's locker room renovation. That is certainly a priority. Pool renovation, and that's really what it will be, is upgrading our pool, making sure that the decking is proper. We do have quite a bit of work to do there as well with the gutter system and the tile of the pool itself. The next one may cause some angst among our community, replacement of the turf. Typically, when that turf was placed into our field, it had about a 10- to 12-year life expectancy. We are already beyond that life expectancy. We have to test it every year to make sure that it still has that rebound, and we're continuing that, we're passing that test. But that test, we will fail eventually, and it's coming close. So that turf does need to be replaced if we're, if we are to maintain a turf field. Likewise, the track needs to be resurfaced, that is wearing out. And we are also going to be looking at replacing the stadium lights, simply because the ones that we have now are too high for our people to do any light replacement. It has to be contracted out, and we'd be having much higher efficiency lighting as well. At JW Leary, the big item here is relocating the office. Right now, you are buzzed in, and then you have to walk across the hall to get to the office to sign in. We're going to be relocating the office such that it'll be a direct contact with the office prior to being allowed inside the building. So again, a major security upgrade. And then some basic items there. Again, we ran out of money in the last project to do the ceiling and light replacement. We'll be adding cooling to the main large group gathering areas, the gym, cafeteria, media center, a partial roof replacement, repairing some of the gymnasium floor, refinishing all of it, and possible locker replacement. Our recurrent lockers are nine-inch-wide lockers, which is extremely tight for students to put any backpacks in. So again, we're looking at being able to do that. At the three elementary schools, the theme is pretty much the same. Adding cooling to the gym, cafeteria, media center, bottle fill stations, which would replace our bubblers, and we're doing that because of the increased demands with having almost zero PPM of lead. By having the water, the bottle fill stations, we have filters, and it takes care of that concern for us. All three buildings are slated to have interior finish updates, which really means, especially in the main corridors, replacing the paneled walls with ceramic tile, which is more hygienic, and also just much more updated. At Jefferson, one little thing there that we'll be doing that's different than the other buildings is some sidewalk reconstruction. In the last project, we put a sidewalk right adjacent to the building, which falls underneath a slanted roof, which creates a hazard almost all winter, so we'll be relocating some of that. Again, Madison, same thing. Adding cooling to the large group gathering areas, bottle fill stations, interior updates. At Nightingale, the only real difference there is that we'd like to be able to add a fence, which would distinguish the John Story walking trail from the playground area. We wouldn't necessarily be fencing in the playground, but again, just having a separation between the two. At the bus garage, we have quite a bit of major work to do. A complete overhaul, complete replacement of the heat system, that has been there since the building was built. Likewise, our section of the building will have a full roof replacement, upgrading the fire alarms, and I just wanted to put that last one in there because it'll tie into the last goal. If we truly have to go with electric bus infrastructure, that portion of that cost out at the bus garage is estimated right now to be 2.4 million. So I wanted to make sure I highlighted that very, very well. At the central admin building, we already talked about the HVAC replacement. The boilers would still be there, but they will become hot water boilers as opposed to steam. Again, that building also is due for an entire roof replacement, upgrading the fire alarms. We'd also be, when we downsize the boilers, the boilers will take up about one-third of the current space. So where the current boilers are now, we would be adding basically like a concrete-walled structure, so that we'd have secure storage, and above that, we would have storage access, just for paper products, that type of thing. Okay, on the next slide, this is where it gets really interesting, and we start talking about the cost. The estimated cost as of today is 79.9 million. The building aid that we are slated to receive would be 97%. I always want to put that caution out, though, that just because we have a 97% building aid ratio, that doesn't mean that that's what we're actually going to get. There will be certain aspects of the project that are not going to be adable. not going to be adable. There may be, we're already a little bit over our cost allowance at the high school. And if that continues, that would be an unadable portion. We anticipate that, having spoken with fiscal advisors, which the finance committee will do again right after break, we anticipate not using any more than $7 million to offset those unadable costs so that we would have a $0 impact from this project to the local taxpayer. And that $7 million from our capital reserve is slightly less than half of what we have in there now. So we'd still be walking away from this project with a little more than $7 million remaining. If the board approves the capital project, we will be voting on that at the same time as we vote on the annual budget, which is May 20. There will be a number of community forums to go through these much more in detail. We worked with, I worked with King and King today. We plan on doing two at the, two right here in the school buildings, one at the junior high, one here at the high school, and then going out to the community. Hopefully one in Louisville, possibly at the Norfolk Fire Station and also at the community building here in Messina. So again, trying to reach out to the public as much as possible, taking the show to them, taking the presentation to them. But what I really hope, especially at the junior high and the high school, is people want to kind of see firsthand, we can also give them a tour, take them to see the pool, the exact areas of concern, let them see the women's locker room. Sometimes being able to see it up close and personal is, is worth, is worth that time and effort. So we're well on our way to this capital project. And again, if it is approved, we would not be able to break ground until sometime in the 2027, 28 school year.
Nice summary. You can't expect to buy a house and not invest money on it like five, 10, 20 years. You have to keep investing and the regulations are changing. And the steam is a good example. If we don't invest in something, it's going to break. So we were planning on doing it. We didn't do it. Now we have to do it. And it's like all those competing needs for the high school, we have to address them. It's only going to get worse if we don't invest. So it's like your house, you have to invest a little bit all the time. And we have a lot of needs. So, well said.
When we first started out, we really had wanted to do the entire HVAC system at the high school, including air conditioning. And just the HVAC alone exceeded our maximum cost allowance for the entire building by about $5 million. So we really had to scale things back and, and really what, what do we need as opposed to what do we want?
So we're going to focus where the need is the most in each building. And slowly, if we have money, we can invest this and spread it out more to the rest of the building. Go ahead, Kevin.
Mr. Peretta. I, one of the, I had an idea. I was thinking about the capital project one day. It's kind of a really abstract idea. One of the issues that we typically have is all about scheduling and then lead time on items like rooftop units and whatnot. And I, the idea is, I wonder, I don't know that it's ever been done this way, but if the architect was able to specify the rooftop units and the district purchased the rooftop units themselves as opposed to having the contractor do it, and then we would save that lead time on the project and get the rooftop unit that we want. And then you would schedule out the labor and the installation through the contracts. And the other thing I was thinking is you've always got a labor issue with whatever contractors got for labor and time and the schedule. You're always very constrained in a nine-week summer to do the work. I wondered if you could break the project up into multiple projects with multiple mechanical contractors, if that would get you the labor you need to shrink your window on your phasing. Just a couple of ideas, just flesh them out with, it's, it's kind of abstract stuff. I don't know that I've ever seen it done this way, but I've kind of thought about it with some of my experiences as ways to save time and money. Just, you can stew on it.
Yeah, I won't be sleeping tonight as I think about that. Thank you. No, because that, that is interesting. That's a good concept. We did talk about phasing some of the, like the HVAC system so that we might focus at the high school first and then move our way over to the other four buildings. One of, one of, I think the concern of the facilities committee, especially those of us that are on the inside, is working at all seven of our district buildings at the same time. It's so, well, you, you know, we're only a couple of miles apart, which is our benefit. But when you're working at seven buildings, we will have a construction management team, but they're only as good as how Greg and I are able to keep them on task. And, you know, having that daily interaction with them. So we, we have been talking about that on the periphery in terms of how can we not necessarily be working at all seven buildings? Any questions on where we are with our capital project? The last non-instructional goal was to talk about bus electrification. I would just assume not. However, we, we did complete the study. It was an Iserda grant conducted by Arcatus. It is pretty thorough. It gives us all the information I think that we need. That has been turned over to both Messina Electric as well as to King and King. And that's where you see that estimate of 2.4 million dollars on the bus electrification. I'll be honest, I'm not sure. Quite frankly, after we just spoke, we had a meeting at the bus garage, I think it was two weeks ago, to discuss adding two electric buses through, through a grant from State Education Department. And as we were talking, we're not quite sure where we're going to get the power, if we have to electrify all 40-plus vehicles at the bus garage, and, and how we're going to get that power from the substation to our bus garage, and what that cost is going to look like. And I don't know, and I, I'm hoping he was just kind of jabbing at me. Mr. McMahon suggested that perhaps we'll need to move the bus garage closer to the substation. I, I haven't, I haven't dared to ask him if he was really serious about that, but it could be.
It might be cheaper to build closer, which is just down the road.
And it would probably be just a storage lot, quite honestly, with, you know, with the power there and the plugins. We know we're not going to put them under, undercover. So that's the progress we've made on that last instructional goal. We've done what we need to do. And now we're just kind of waiting for the capital project. Any questions on those two goals?
No, but I'm, I'm really hoping that our legislators can convince our governor to push these requirements back because I don't think they've really thought about it. I mean, we're talking a seriously heavy piece of machinery. It is going to wear out the tires quickly. They're very expensive to be replaced. My husband has an EV truck. I call it the beast. It's so heavy. It's wonderful. But when he steps on the gas, like it really goes. What happens if that bus is in motion and the person's trying to break it and it just won't slow down? I mean, I'm worried that they haven't really thought about all these things as far as safety for kids. And then up here, we've got to have heat. So they're not going to use the batteries for heat. So they're going to have to have some other alternative form of heaters on the bus.
Yeah, we will have diesel heaters on the buses.
So we're getting rid of diesel buses so that we can have a diesel heater and an electric bus. Okay, that's what I mean. I hope that somebody comes to their senses and says, we haven't really explored this.
And also since we started that study, we have now a new air product that's going to produce some different source of energy that doesn't pollute. So it's a good alternative that we have to look at. That might be cheaper.
Maybe.
That we didn't consider.
So we've looked at it with air products. I have a lot of concerns. The technology's not quite there yet with buses. There's only, so for a hydrogen-powered bus, right now there is, or at least as of a couple of months ago, there's only one company in New York State that's authorized to produce a hydrogen bus. And we have to give them, we provide them with a gasoline or a diesel-powered bus. They remove that combustible power plant, then they put in a hydrogen battery power plant, which is all good, except that we lose our entire warranty on that, on that bus. So any of the other components that would go wrong, it's gone. I can't order a shell of a bus without the power plant. So somewhere that diesel motor, that gasoline motor is ending up somewhere else. When we spoke with air products, we would, you know, we could possibly arrange for some sharing, at least temporarily of using their facility to fuel our vehicles. However, at some point, we'd have to put in our own hydrogen fueling station. And the cost of that is more than three times the cost of the electrification for the, for the infrastructure, at least now. So I think there's a lot of unknowns with that. I don't disagree with you. I think hydrogen may very well be the way to go in the future. It's just I don't think the infrastructure is there yet. But perhaps, perhaps once air products is here and gets up and running, maybe we'll see a change in that technology. Okay, the next item is just a quick discussion about the school calendar. There's a, a committee from all the component districts of our SLL Bosse's that works on this. And they work backwards. They use the state region's calendar and they work backwards to get the 180 days and try to get all the vacations in and any holidays, old or new. And so we've seen that proposed calendar. It does include for us five snow days, which is good. At first, there was a miscalculation. We thought we only had four, but it, it is actually five. Any questions with that school calendar?
We don't have a lot of leeway anyway, the way they work it out. So it is what it is.
Okay, we also have five donations from various organizations. And you can see those, a couple of them are, three of them will be going to the robotics, $1,000 to the Jefferson musical, and $250 to the Nightingale musical. So certainly a big thank you to all the community supporters of our students and our school. Would you like me to do the budget presentation at this time?
Sure.
Chris, were you able to get that? Okay. And I thought I had shared it with Chris, but I think I shared the other one with him twice instead of each of these. So on the budget planning, on the next sheet, the board has already seen this. This is the state aid analysis based on the governor's proposal. I won't bore everybody with the details again, but what we are looking at, if the governor's proposals remain intact, we are looking at a foundation aid increase of just under $2 million, which is great news. One of the things that I would call out on this, these sheets that we see, these analysis, especially when it comes so early in the year, and January's very early, these numbers are not complete. And Mallory and I were talking about this earlier today. If you look down, our building aid ratio looks like it's decreasing by $1 million. And typically, I don't get too worried about that because that means we're paying off bonds or that a project's been completely paid. But I know that, we knew that wasn't the case. And in fact, that's probably going to end up being a plus $1 million. Okay, so I think I had that number right, Mallory? Right, so it'll be up from that 3.1, so about 1.2, 1.3 million extra. But again, that's not necessarily great news because that means that's money going out of our, that's money we're paying. So it's just a reimbursement. It's money in, money out. But again, these numbers are very preliminary, other than our foundation aid. Okay, on the next slide, preliminary budget expense increases. If we were to take our current budget this year and simply move it forward with no changes, we'd be looking at a $986,000 increase, which is a 1.4% increase. We also have the additional component of our budget, which is the strategic budget process, which is where the administrative team gets together and we talk about what it is that we think we need or want additional for the next year. As that stands right now, I'm really proud to say that our strategic budget is right now $1.3 million. As an admin team, we really worked hard to identify what the purpose of the strategic budget is. And when the admin team came together, there was not a lot of fluff. In fact, I would say there was almost no fluff. These are actual things that our admin team said, we think we need, we think would improve our program for next year. This time last year with the strategic budget was somewhere north of $4 million of additional spending that was being requested. So again, I think we're working very collaboratively as a group to be, to be realistic, identifying needs and wants. So therefore, our total draft expenses, the increase there is $2.3 million. And again, please keep in mind, this is just a draft. It's still going through finance committee. I would be shocked if that number does not get dropped from $2.3 million down to something significantly lower. Our tax cap on the next page is, the tax cap has been calculated using raw numbers straight across and as 4.27% increase would be allowable under state law. Again, we don't believe we're going to be anywhere near that. We are, I think, as a finance committee, aiming for zero or as close to zero as we can possibly get. I don't know if I'm speaking out of turn. Mr. Peretta?
You are not.
Okay, so again, we are aiming for zero. But we, again, I think it's important to note that what our, what our tax cap is. And then the final thing I just want to touch on, bus purchases. I'll be recommending a proposition that we purchase four full-sized diesel buses at a cost of 180, almost $184,000 per bus for a total of 720, almost 721,000. Again, we use our reserve money to purchase those. We do not bond those. So it's an outright purchase. And we do have more than enough in our reserves to cover that. And again, we replenish those every year. I will note that the buses are more expensive than they were last year. One part of that increase is strictly just due to the inflationary cost. The other aspect is looking at some of the add-ons, I think that are important for our buses, for our student safety and our student comfort. Little things, making sure that we have the tops painted white. You know, studies are showing that it drops the interior temperature by as much as 10 degrees. So for our kiddos, that, that makes a big difference, especially in the warmer days. Having some different controls that are on the steering wheel as opposed to off to the side, so that the driver can maintain visibility of the road rather than having to look for where the switches are to open and close the doors and activates the lights. And then also just again, another little thing, grab bars on both sides of the steps. Our older students really don't have a problem, but watching a four or five-year-old trying to make those big steps, it's a challenge for some of them. So again, have grab bars on either side, really just a safety enhancement. And then the final thing that I've added on to all four buses this year are luggage racks that go underneath. Anytime we take a sports trip, the rule is all sports equipment needs to be housed somewhere other than the passenger compartment. The last eight buses that we had purchased did not have those. So again, I'm getting a little bit nervous that we're going to run out, we're going to be running a fleet without, without the necessary safety equipment to get our student athletes where they need to go. So all four buses will have that. And again, much more information to come over the next couple of months as it relates to this proposed budget. And I believe that concludes all of my reports.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Burke. We'll move on now to recommended actions. And first up is the consent agenda. And I would at this time ask if any board member would like to have any consent agenda item removed from the consent agenda for further, for individual vote and potential further discussion.
We don't.
Okay, hearing no requests, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Remove. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
I had a question about, um, let me see who. I had a question about, let me see who this is. Uh, these are warrants. So again, we're having large numbers on cafeteria in general, but is that like a standard? Is that standard? Like, it's a, it's a hundred and, almost $160,000 to cafeteria. These are like payables, right? Yeah, I think so. Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions on the consent agenda? All in favor? Any opposed? That carries. Moving on to other items for action, we have first up approval of our Bosse's nominee, Mr. Bennett. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? That carries. Approval of the board norms.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed? All right. A motion to approve the arrangement with diligent community.
No move.
Do I have a second?
Nope.
Okay, no second. That motion dies for lack of a second. Next is the approval of the 2025-26 school calendar.
No move.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? That carries. Next is a resolution on a paid administrative leave. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? That carries. Next, we have a resolution on a Section 913 of New York State education law. Questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed? That carries. Next is a resolution on Section 75 of New York State education law.
No move.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? That carries. And for personnel action items, we'll turn it over to Mr. Burke.
Mr. Haggett, I recommend that the board approve the action items on personnel listed as 1 through 69.
No move.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Thank you. Well, next we have new business. And do we have any items that board members would like to see placed on a future agenda?
I have a comment. Earlier in the meeting, when I asked Isabel for more details about the problematic corner bedrooms, I knew about the problems. I just wanted to know what she was feeling about it. And that, just make sure that there's no confusion because we know about the problem.
Do you mind if I talk about it a little bit more in public? So what we have heard from students, especially at the high school, is a fear about using our gang-style bathrooms. And part of it really goes right back to, and when I say gang, I shouldn't, it means that there's more than one toilet in the room. It's not a gang of anything, right? But what we're hearing from our students, as Isabel said, because there's so much vaping that goes on, there's guilt by association.
Especially if you're a student athlete, that becomes a real major issue. Or even if you're not a student athlete and you've got a clean record and you're not using vape, that's a major issue. So one of the parts of the capital project that we're looking at is, again, I couldn't share everything tonight, but is to convert one boy gang bathroom, one female gang bathroom into individualized restrooms. So, so that we'd have more options for our students.
Yes.
We're going in the right direction.
Any other items that board members would like on a future agenda? Hearing none, move on to communications from the public and press. Mr. Bennett, anything you'd like to? You're welcome. I don't think we need another executive session, so I would, at this point, entertain a motion for adjournment.
No move.
All in favor? Any opposed? Make, write that down. Mr. Hayes?